All right, Chair Stewart, we are at the 6 o'clock hour. I have my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, December 7th. We have a full quorum of commissioners. We are holding this meeting via teleconference and we are called to order. We'll start with a moment of silence. All right, thank you, everyone. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements tonight? Nobody seeing head shakes. Public comment period is open. This is a time to comment on items which are not on the agenda or things that we will be covering later but that you cannot stay for. Anthony, do we have anyone in the queue or with a raised hand?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I see Betty Winholtz with her hand raised.
All right, let's hear what Ms. Winholtz has to say.
Well, she just took it down.
Okay.
Ryan Garcia has his hand raised and I am unmuting Ryan Garcia.
All right, thank you.
Hi there, how are you guys doing?
Good, welcome.
Hopefully you can hear me. I have two separate comments and the first is unrelated to the Agenda Item B1 that I want to comment on later, so I'll stick around and do that if that's what you want me to do rather than doing both here. Whatever you put.
You know, we're actually, I'm going to make a suggestion that we change our agenda to switch C1 ahead of the public hearing. So if you wanted to comment now so you don't have to wait as long, that would be okay.
Okay, okay, that'll be fine. So first off, I just wanted to make a comment that I had sent an email over yesterday and I was hoping that most of you had the opportunity to review it. And it was initially posted in an electronic format that has been a practice for some time now. This was for the public to read, but it was quickly removed, which surprised me. I was told by the city clerk that the city changed their policy regarding public correspondence and that the city will not be redistributing or posting any Agenda correspondence received directly by the city until an overall policy is developed. I later found today that my comments were posted again on the Archive Center website, so that was surprising. But my main point here, I'll keep this brief, is that it seems inappropriate for city staff to make policy changes the day before a scheduled commission of board meeting. It gives the impression that the city staff are not truly dedicated to providing an open forum for public participation in local government decisions. And that's all I had to say on that point. Regarding item B1 on the agenda, my concern is regarding the proposed zoning update, B1. In particular, I'm opposed to the citywide allowance for the encroachments of sheds and accessory structures to lateral and front lot lines of residential properties. Current city zoning codes does not allow for the encroachment of such structures to lateral and front lot lines. It also limits the distance such structures can be placed to structures on adjacent properties. Residents and homeowners in Morro Bay are largely unaware of what is being proposed. City leaders tell me that the reason they are attempting to change the rules regarding this matter is mainly due to the lack of storage and space that residents in North Morro Bay experienced because of the relatively small lot sizes in these neighborhoods. Most of us can recognize that the original planning and design of a large part of North Morro Bay has resulted in a few issues for those neighborhoods. Due to this, unique rules and codes have been developed to address those shortcomings. I don't think residents of Morro Bay want to export the design problems of North Morro Bay to the remainder of the city. The reason I'm even aware of these proposed changes is that my neighbor built such a structure in June of this year. City leaders admit that the structure is not currently legally allowed to be in its current location. I think it should be moved. If the rules eventually change to allow for such structures in the future, then it can be moved back. Along those lines, inclusion and equity have been topics that have been discussed frequently by this commission and by the city council. It would be nice to see it in this case as well. If the commission does choose to proceed with these changes despite the wishes of the community, can they also specify some minimum design elements such as addressing drainage, which is a problem on my property now, and also not allowing the coverage of existing windows partially or wholly on the main structures on which they are built? Could the commission also consider allowing such structures on smaller lots, say less than 2,500 square feet, but maintain the three-foot setbacks on larger lots? The way I see it is there's no one size fits all. The various districts in the city speak to this. And I'm not asking for an exception. And while exceptions do arise in the development of the city, this case is not one of them. Consideration of lot size, setbacks, and proximity to neighbors are just some of the various indicators that are brought into question. For the most part, I've been pleased with the city staff. And except for this issue, although it does affect me, it also affects every district and zone in our city. Again, one size does not fit all. Thank you for your time and I look forward to hearing from your comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garcia. All right, Anthony, do we have anyone else in the queue?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stewart. I do see a couple of hands raised. Sean Green, I am unmuting you.
Okay.
Okay, you should be unmuted.
Yes, thank you, Planning Commission. I will make a couple of quick comments about item B1 just because I probably can't stick around. But I first want to strongly agree with Mr. Garcia's commentary regarding the city staff's handling of public comment in recent weeks. It seems that based on a recommendation from the city attorney that because some case somewhere in California is currently under consideration or needs to be considered by him, that the city has kind of abandoned their public commenting pattern that we're accustomed to. So I was advised to send public comments directly to commissions themselves and to city council, but that creates no record, no public record if those commissioners and council members choose not to reply or discuss my comments. So it's just a losing situation that needs to be addressed soon rather than later. Regarding the draft, the hearing draft, I do want to make a couple of quick minor comments. Well, one's kind of minor and one's maybe a little more significant. The first one is regarding front yard residential fence heights, which I'm not sure why we would increase that one foot from three-feet solid fences and four-feet open fences to four-feet closed fences and five-feet open fences. We already have enough fortress-style residential front yards that we want to combat that whenever possible so that we can help reduce this kind of closed-natured vibe that Morro Bay, or reputation rather, that Morro Bay is developing or has held for a long time here in Still County. The other comment that I wanted to make is regarding short-term vacation rentals. It's 17 dot 30 dot 220. In a recent discussion with city staff, I was informed that high-density residential districts were allowed to have short-term vacation rentals and not be subject to the residential maximum number of permits, which I felt was inaccurate at the time. And it seems that as I'm reading this draft plan, I see specific language that says multi-family developments in residential districts may not be used as short-term vacation rentals, which is really encouraging language and I'm hoping that's true. What I believe may be the case is because, for whatever reason, hotels are allowed in multifamily districts, in residential high-density districts, something that I also disagree with, that that gray area is also being applied in practice to vacation rental permitting. And I want to make sure that that is clarified as not allowable. We should not be like reducing our high-density housing opportunities in exchange for vacation rentals or hotels. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much, I wish you the best during your discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, Anthony?
Yes, thank you, Chair Stewart. Betty Winholtz, I see you with your hand up. You are unmuted.
Thank you, this is Betty Winholtz. I would like to ask, and maybe Mr. Garcia explain the reason why my public comment did not get published on the internet today because maybe that's not going on anymore or you have to send it to a certain email address. So maybe you could verbally clarify that during the meeting tonight. So I'm not sure I will be here for B1, so I would like to read my B1 comment. Dear Planning Commissioners, to understand the changes made from the current zoning ordinance to the draft zoning ordinance is still not easy because there is no side-by-side comparison. In addition, except for Commissioner and Grafia, all of you were not on the commission when the zoning ordinance was reviewed in 2018. I'm going to guess you have not had the time to read both documents and make your own comparisons between the old and the proposed changes. I would like to point out three examples of why time needs to be taken to make sure the changes being made are the changes that serve our community. The first example has to do with Measure D and I list the numbers as 17, 11, 20 in the new zoning code and 17, 24, 180 in the old. And this is where Measure D has been embellished on or added to. And I feel like it's been somewhat watered down by adding public amenities, which I don't think was the intent of Measure D, but that that needs to be looked at and whether that interpretation is actually appropriate. My second example was regard to ESHA and how a number of the buffers have been cut in half from 100 down to 50 or 50 down to 25. And I would hope that you would look at those because this is a real area in Morro Bay that we need to be protective of because of the ESHA. The other, third one is the fencing and it's Section 17, 2390 versus 17, 48, 100. And it's what was just referred to by Mr. Green, how the fence heights are being altered. And I think that that also is inappropriate and needs to be looked at. Please discuss at least these as well as the one about the setback that Dr. Garcia raised for his and Ms. Novak raised for her, that you will hopefully have more than one night to look at this document as it is going to be that which enforces our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winholtz. Anthony, do we have anyone else in the queue?
Yes, I see Cindy B. with her hand raised. Okay, Cindy, I have unmuted you.
My name is Cindy Batont, I live in North Morro Bay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So we live on a street-to-street lot at the end of a block and I don't think there's that many street-to-street lots in Morro Bay. Unless there's a safety concern that I'm missing, I request that rear interior and corner side fences have the same fence height requirement of six and a half feet. So I disagree with the previous two speakers. The requirement of a lesser height fence on my street corner yard denies me the ability to have a reasonable-sized private yard space outside my lower bedroom. I already maintained 12 feet of landscaping from the curb to my lot line. If I want right now, if I want to have a six-and-a-half-foot fence, I have to give up another 10 feet of my yard to do that just so that I can have some privacy from the passing traffic, the people that park right at my fence and look over it right now or from my neighbors whose front windows face the side of my house. And this is something that I think might be unique to street-to-street lots. I fully support protecting visibility at corners for traffic safety. However, to impose a shorter height on the fence line between those two protected areas feels very arbitrary to me. Commercial properties near me are not bound by that requirement. They're allowed to have a six-and-a-half-foot fence on the street side. After lowering our fence four years ago to meet the requirements that the city has currently in place, we've watched many new fences be built that don't meet the current standards but are allowed to remain. So I really want to stress that at least on street-to-street lots in RM zones, I would like to see that requirement changed to be more consistent. So again, rear interior and corner side fences be six-and-a-half feet. And on a safety note, I think it needs to specify in that corner or triangle for visibility. Right now, the height requirement is three to seven feet, but it doesn't specify where that's measured from. And if it's not measured from the surface of the street, it's not achieving the safety that we need to have at corners. Right now, I have a corner down the street here that has a sloping hill with two to three feet of ivy growing on it. And when my car, the front of it at the curb, my visibility is greatly diminished and I can't see a small child on a bike coming up the bike lane until I inch out into that bike lane. So I think that's something that really should be defined in there is where that measurement is coming from. And kudos to whoever for removing chain link fence from residential neighborhoods in the wind. They're just terribly noisy, so I support that 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batont, that's good information to have. Anthony, anybody else for public comment?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you. We will close public comment. We have no presentations. Mr. Graham, would this be the time to suggest the change in our agenda?
Moving the, moving the new business. The item in front of the public hearing item. Oh, yes, this would be fine for that.
Okay, so the reason that Mr. Graham suggested this was so that our staff planning intern could get this done and then move on for the rest of her evening and we could attack our public hearing with more time and a little bit of legaliness. So if that meets with the approval of the commission.
I guess a head nod.
Looks like we're nodding heads. Okay, then I think we will make that change. So we'll go first through our consent calendar, then we will do C1, the new business about the front street market, and then we'll go on to public hearings. So consent calendar, we have our current and advanced planning processing list and two sets of minutes. Any questions, concerns on any of those items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion approved, minutes, Mike, ready?
Thanks, Mike. In a second? Thanks, Joe. So Joe seconded, all in favor. I, it's like we're all for it, nobody opposed, so we can move on now.
Susan, can I just do a clarification?
Absolutely.
On those, I guess Asia would be abstaining since she was not on the Planning Commission.
There is, yeah, she could certainly go.
Because I had to do that when I first came. Remember, she's a newcomer, so she gets to take the baton for me.
There you go. All right, so we'll move on to item C and I believe we have Allison McCarley presenting.
We do, Allison is our intern and she's our first opportunity in front of the Planning Commission, so be nice. All right, Allison, turn it over to you.
Welcome, Allison. Thank you so much, thank you, Scott. So I'm going to screen share my presentation, so just give me a second. And then we go from the beginning. Why isn't this working? Sorry, guys, my computer seems to have frozen. Let me try that again, sorry about that. Click PowerPoint's not working. Let me, yeah, I'm really sad, I don't know, my computer's not working.
So Allison, maybe I can, can you email me the presentation?
Yes, I'm so, so sorry about this. It was working a minute ago and now my computer has decided to freeze on me.
I was going to say I might be able to share the PDF as well if needed.
Sure. Let me send it over to Scott really quick. Sorry, so sorry about that. I don't know why my computer's not working the PowerPoint anymore. I just sent it over to you, Scott.
Okay, all right.
It's because it knows that you were going to make a presentation tonight.
Oh, I think I got it. Oops. Okay, sorry, let me do that one more time. Actually, it was my mouse that wasn't working, not my computer. That makes sense, I was like, why isn't it working? All right, let's try this again. Apologize about that. No. From the beginning. All right, and... Send me the presentation?
You want to swap to the person?
Yes.
Swap.
How about now? Perfect, perfect, sorry about that, guys. So hello and good evening, I'm Allison, I'm the new planning intern here at Morro Bay. I'm really happy to be here tonight. So tonight, I want to do an update on special use permit, CUP 1915. The applicant, Jolene, should be on the Zoom call. She said she was trying to make it. I can't see the other Zoom participants, so I hope she's in the audience tonight. So the waterfront market is coordinated by Jolene with the Slow Vendors Association managed by Casey Trench. So the waterfront market is a project that is meant to open up a vending location to local businesses to grow and promote their legally established businesses in Morro Bay. So on January 7th, 2020, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit for the annual waterfront market event at 101 Front Street between Giovanni's Fish Market and the Stax Wine Bar. The CUP required a report back to the Planning Commission relating to how the market functioned prior to the end of the year of 2020. However, as we all know, the COVID-19 pandemic hit early 2020, so the applicant requested a postponement of the special use permit and to be forwarded on to 2020. The request was granted and as spring and summer of 2021 brought the relaxing of COVID-19 public health restrictions, the waterfront market was able to move forward and host their events. Ms. Jolene Trench, the applicant noted in her email to staff at Exhibit A that the events were very successful and that many vendors had broken record sales. A list of vendors for each weekend is in Exhibit C of the staff report. In addition, the city department received no complaints about the market during its time this year. So here are some pictures from the event. One included as part of Exhibit C as well. One member of the planning staff observed one weekend afternoon passing by that it seemed to be running really well and really running smoothly and that there are a lot of people there enjoying the market. So the proposed, applicants are seeking to have another event or market again for next year, for 2022, and the events will be similar as this year's. There is a request to extend the market for an additional five days. However, those dates have not been secured yet. However, Giovanni at Giovanni's Fish Bar, no Fish Market, sorry, the Stax Wine Bar has approved additional dates for this event and the request will be approved hopefully as a modification to the permit by city staff upon receipt of those five days. Conclusion, the market was a success, vendors had wonderful sales and there were no complaints made. And for recommendation, after the minutes of the Planning Commission, review the staff report and provide feedback to staff as appropriate.
Thank you very much, Allison, that was quite clear. And there we go, you stopped screen sharing, see? Technology's working.
Yes.
All right, and I see Commissioner Rodriguez with his hand up. Do you have a question, comment?
Yeah, Allison, can you just clarify for me? Because I did count the number of days and there were dates associated with those days. So, you know, it happened by nature, so when I came down, it says 15, but there seems to be dates already associated with every date that they want. Can you clarify, are those just holding spots?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify. So what are the holding spots? So they're not done yet. What dates haven't been confirmed yet? That's all I want to know.
We don't know the five additional dates that they want to do yet. They haven't submitted them yet.
Okay, because on that schedule, if you go back to your table, can you show me your table?
Sure.
Yeah, just, that's where I got a little confused.
So, Mike, they want five dates in addition to those existing 15 that they have? And that will be something for us to talk about whether we want to approve that or not.
I didn't hear that, so I'd heard 15, but I never heard 20.
Yeah, they want to go with 20.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear. So we're perfect now. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Roshan?
Susan, we're ready for comments as well as questions?
I think we, let's see, we can have questions and then I think we will see if there's any further public comment on this and then we will go to comments and discussion.
Yes, I'll wait.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this point? I think we all did receive the letter from Mr. Green and I understand a lot of his concerns. He wanted to sort of have us addressing this, raise those other concerns about Giovanni's and Stax and public access. Mr. Graham, I sort of feel like this probably isn't the appropriate time for us to be addressing those questions. It seems like a separate.
So I would say this, I don't think it has all that much bearing on what's in front of you today. This is really kind of a report back type thing, receive and file, although interested in input from the commission. Certainly, Mr. Green's email raises issues that the Planning Commission previously reviewed.
Yes.
In 2020. And we can certainly, you know, go into that a little bit. It's not an agendized item, but we can speak to that a little bit, a little bit of the history of what went on and Cindy's on the call, so she's the planner that prepared the staff report for that. So it's kind of up to you, we can give that information to you right now, but maybe it's better to do it when you're in discussion.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, and Anthony, do we have anybody else in the queue for public comment on this item right now?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I see a hand raised besides Sean Green. Casey Tench has had a hand raised for quite a while. So I'm going to unmute Casey Tench.
That sounds good.
Okay, you should be unmuted.
Hi, Susan, how are you today?
Good, how are you? What a cute picture.
Thanks. Usually I have a video running right now, but I don't think I'm authorized for that. Yeah, that's our kid, he's four years old now. That was the kid that was running around in 2019 around the...
Oh my goodness, so cute. Okay, back to business.
Yes, ma'am. So we're here today to answer any and all questions, if there's any concerns, anything we can do. The best thing we can do right now is tell you, we had an absolute wonderful time down there. All the patrons and the vendors and the staff of Giovanni, it was just nothing but a good time. Nothing crazy, no complaints, which is awesome to hear. We appreciate that. We definitely do our best and put our best foot forward every time we set up that market and, you know, we're here to see the community first and foremost.
All right, Casey, thank you so much. And maybe you could stick around in case we have any other questions for you.
We're here for you.
All right, thank you. And then...
Susan, I have a question.
Yes.
Since we have Mr. Tench here. Casey, obviously I wasn't aware of that. I didn't participate in that last time around, but I'd like your input on if you could do something better, what would it have been regarding this whole thing? So in other words, it sounded great, but if you could do something different and improve it, what would that be?
Oh, man, that's a million-dollar question and a fantasy dream in our world because we're so used to being, you know, do what we can versus, you know... you know, do what we can versus, you know, what would we do if we had the, the door open for us? And uh, you know, I, I would spend the next six months pondering that, and.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking on Mr. Tench is because we didn't seem to get any complaints. But obviously, there's always, you know, as has been cited, there's always things that may concern individuals, so I'm just looking for anything that maybe we can do better, because I don't, you know what I mean? I'm just looking for that input, since we didn't get any complaints, that's for late, but is there anything we could do better, especially if we're gonna be granting more days?
Yeah, um, as far as the city's concerned, I mean, parking's always an issue, so I mean, that's always something.
There you go. That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah, parking is, you know, not necessarily parking around a lot, it's just the, the massive amount of people that are coming into town regardless if we're there or not. But Morro Bay is a popular destination for the harbor. Uh, people come from all the way from Central Valley, north and south, uh, because we're pretty much the closest, uh, friendliest beach area to them. And with that being said, you know, more parking for the community would definitely increase sales for the Harbor District as well as our small events. And I think also, you know, not having avocado and Margarita Fest, I hope they come back, but more events do tend to bring uh, communities together a lot more. I'd love to see more of that if we could be any, any tool in the toolbox to help out with that. That would be a part of it. Um, but, you know, we live in Los Osos, and you can tell our town doesn't do very much. I mean, our kids in the Christmas parade this weekend just to walk down the street to say that, you know, we're, we're from Los Osos. But when it comes to Morro Bay, you know, that's, you know, if we had our chance to live there, we would. Um, it's a special place for me in my life. We've been here, you know, twenty years now. And Morro Bay is where we're at, God, almost every weekend. And uh, but anything that we can do as a community, I mean, that's, that's what really gives a fruit of life. You know, um.
Great, well, thank you. So let's cap, capture our next public comment. Uh, Mr. Green?
Okay, I see Sean Green with his hand up. I am unmuting Sean.
Thank you.
He's unmuted.
Thanks, Planning Commission. I'll just keep it quick, because I did write a pretty, a pretty long letter that I hope you had a chance to take a look at. Uh, the only couple of things that I'd like to add is that in the staff report, the, uh, the market was considered a success, which is relative to the, uh, the private parcel that, that this took place on, um, and I think that's something that, that we need to keep in mind. Um, you know, upwards of some, I don't know, fifty to two hundred and fifty parking spaces may be uh allocated during those days specifically to this event, um, which could uh perhaps affect um adjacent businesses, other people trying to uh enjoy other parts of Morro Bay. Uh, so I'm not against festivals, I'm not against marketplaces, I'm all for those kinds of things, but keeping in mind that this takes place on uh, tight court, tight quarters and private property um means it's something that we need to additionally consider, especially from a Planning Commission standpoint. Um, and in that same vein, I think that if we don't take the time, uh, when, when a certain parcel uh puts in a, an application, even if it's uh here in this case, a kind of an agent on behalf of uh the parcel holder. Um, if we don't take the time to evaluate the, the, the potential uh non-compliance at that parcel um, at that time, it seems as if we never do. And so I do think it's important, you know, and I do think it's relevant to this application that we uh at least take a look at uh, some of the major items on this occasionally problematic parcel, because this is, this event is only doubling down on those potential issues, so uh, that's what I'd like to, to say, and I, uh, again, wish you the, the best during your deliberation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Green. Anthony, do we have anyone else in the queue for public comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Alright, so we'll bring it back to the commission, and I'm seeing some raised hands among commissioners. Um, Mr. Roshan, would you like to start us off and comments and discussion?
Uh, thanks, thanks, President Stewart. Um, I guess I'd like to make a couple of quick comments about this. Um, I personally, but I think the commission, um, we're very enthusiastic about activating the Harbor Walk through events, and so um what this represents is something I think that's really good. Uh, I think uh the, the uh concern about the public way access is very real. Uh, this really is a terrific lot for events. I think it's great. I love what it does, uh, location, everything. But I do think that particular part of the, of the Harbor Walk is difficult right there by Giovanni's and across the uh parking lot, so it is a critical path. I guess I'd like to join Sean uh in his uh concerns and what he sees as an opportunity here to do better with the Harbor Walk. Seems a really good opportunity. Um, I think it would emphasize the commission's uh vigilance and awareness around the Harbor Walk to uh take every opportunity to improve it, make it better, and it would emphasize the commission's concern about public way, public access, and continuing to, I think, elevate that whenever we have the opportunity. I'd like to suggest that we, uh, rather than going directly to an administrative approval of five days, that the commission would ask this to be brought back um, rather than an administrative approval with the staff's report about um what kind of outreach they could make regarding Sean's points and improvements that might be made. Um, I've heard from staff that Giovanni's and others have been very supportive about trying to make this work. It's not easy to balance businesses with the public efforts down there, and I'm very excited that Giovanni's and others are willing to try. Um, I think we should take this opportunity, and I'm hoping other commissioners will join me in this uh, to, to have staff reach out to, to both property owners and see if we can do better around some of these.
Thank you, Bill. Um, definitely agree with those access issues. There you are. We lost you for a minute there. Um, and, and I think we'll go on and, and have discussion and more comments. I do think at some point we should um also address directly whether or not we want to add five days to this, because I would have some some thoughts on that myself, but let's go to Commissioner Rodriguez.
Uh, thanks, Susan. Um. You know, I think that I did read the report. I read uh Sean's input and uh, you know, there's always opportunities to improve, and so I agree with Bill. There's always, especially the water threat there. Um, and I'm glad that uh Mr. Hmm, um, that the, Mr. Tench responded to, you know, and actually brought out the fact that parking may be an issue during this event. Because one of the things I would be interested in is seeing if we can't possibly designate parking closer to this, you know, but not necessarily there where we're using it all. In other words, we do that everywhere in the Bay Area. You know, you designate parking close to this event, but not necessarily there, and you shuttle the people in. That's what I meant about opportunities. So that, I, so I'm in total agreement with Bill, the fact that we could you know, look for feedback from staff in order to look at the ways to make this even a better event. You know, I disagree that it wasn't a good event, but just administratively approve five days, not. I don't think that's necessary. I think that we could get that input and do everything, do both at the same time, in other words. Make a rock and chew gum at the same time, so I'd like to take that opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. Uh, Asia?
Yeah, um, I, of course, from an economic development perspective, I'm always in support of um encouraging small business, small entrepreneurs to have outlets to um make their brands and their businesses known, especially in a public space that creates a lot of great community. I think that this is, you guys are bringing up really great points, and I'm wondering if um I'm wondering what the Planning Commission's role is in recommending um that alongside issues such as parking and wayfinding. I'm wondering if we can make recommendations or ask the staff to make recommendations for um looking, basically, I'm wondering if we could look at how this market and the days that the market takes place can have a wider impact in the um business community, how um transportation, wayfinding can be used to impact the market as well as the other waterfront businesses and even up Main Street. I think this could be a really good opportunity for that, to both solve problems and connect the market to the wider business community.
Great, thank you. Joe, have you got anything? And you're muted.
Yeah, uh, you know, I, I've long supported
any and all efforts to, to make the Harbor Walk in that particular area more immediately recognizable and doing things to keep it free of obstruction. So any, anything, um, anything that was, any change that will support that, because I know people are reluctant, some people are reluctant to use that part because it doesn't look as public as other parts of the boardwalk. I think we need to do something about that, and I'm, I'm fully aware of the difficulties of, of um al- also conducting, you know, a, a, a fishing business in the area, so I, I understand the constraints, but I think we can do a little bit more uh, to sort of broadcast that this is a, a public walkway.
And I think that's a, a prime time to do it, when you have a big event with a lot of people in there, is to make that space more visible rather than less. Um, one of my concerns, I, so I definitely agree um with Mr. Green, Mr. Roshan, Mr. Rodriguez, all of you about highlighting that Harbor Walk rather than hiding it, making it more accessible, more visible, um, sort of redesigning maybe the layout a little bit around that, perhaps better signage. Um, I, I have concerns about adding five more days to what is basically um a single event source and a single event place. So eventually, we would hope to have um the Avocado Festival back. Um, I, I don't think that's been given up on entirely. Um, perhaps even the Harbor Festival, and maybe there are other festivals, and these things take place in different parts of the community. So um, I would, rather than sort of tying up an additional number of weekends um for this one group, I would rather, you know, hopefully leave it open for other nonprofits and other, you know, groups in our community that put on events. Um, I also know that some of these vendors, when they have uh these events, uh, leave the uh Saturday Farmer's Market to do those, those weekend events, so that's kind of dilutes that little market, um, which is in the downtown area, and, and so that, again, instead of spreading the love around the community, it, it drops it back all down on the embarked arrow. Um, so we do already see some of those impacts. Um, I, I do think, I think events will come back, and I think there is um an urge and a, and a willingness and excitement about doing them, so I think there will be plenty of opportunities for these vendors and, and hopefully many more to sell their wares in other places um during other seasons of our, our little town. Asia?
Yeah, what is the system for organizations wanting to utilize this space? If we don't um permit an extra five days or so with this group, um, is there a chance that the lot will just remain empty maybe on valuable weekend? Um, a valuable weekend that could really use an event. Is there some um system or way that it's determined what locations are interested? Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott. It looks like you're ready to speak.
Um, it's private property, Commissioner King, so um what's happened traditionally, um, before this market came forward is that um Giovanni's would have their own market there during events like Avocado, Margarita Festival, uh Harbor Fest, that type of thing. He would hold his own thing there. Um, and then this group came along and formalized, and so now he just kind of leases the space to them to do it, doesn't have his own. We sort of used to call it Geo Fest, um, air quotes around it, uh, internally, because we could come every time there was an event down and get the temporary use permit to have those, so. I don't know, but it's a whole lot different now. It's just you have an organization now that's probably a little better put together, um, but just having events at the, at the location currently. But um, my guess is, you know, if we don't have them there those five days and we have events, as um Chair Stewart suggested, that Giovanni will just do his own, because he's not gonna have other people come in there, my take, um, because that's what he's done traditionally for years, so, anyway, my two cents.
I see, so I was just wondering if the demand for events was there already? For, I know we're kind of waiting for it to come back.
Yeah, can I just chime in, Asia? This is my criticism, uh, and that's why it's important that we understand that in twenty twenty, we did give them fifteen days. They're asking for twenty days in twenty twenty two, and as we recover and things start happening, they do have to come back annually for their number of days, right, Scott? Is that true or not true?
I'm sorry, they don't have to.
In other words, we're not, we're not granting something in perpetuity as well.
We can, we can require them to. Uh, they require to give us the days, because they will change, right? They're not always the same, right?
Yes.
Uh, the weekends, you know, events happen are different and those types of things, so um, yeah, I mean, they potentially, those change over time, so they have to give us the dates, so that's part of the sort of reissuance of the parliament is reidentifying those days, so yeah, I guess it would be coming back.
And the reason I would be, I'm trying to answer Asia and others' concerns about maybe if, when things come back, that we have the opportunity to give these days to other people, other, you know, nonprofits or whatever.
So, so just so we all understand what I was saying before is, again, this, this event process, ingredients aside, Giovanni had these separately on his. And um, those permits are not issued by the Planning Commission. Those permits are issued by staff, um, temporary use permits, and they covered a few weekends a year that that he would have those types of things, and that's traditionally how they've been done, and that's how the, that's what's allowed per the ordinance. Uh, so it would be something that comes before the, the Planning Commission, uh, anyway, so.
Mr. Roshan?
Um, I, I guess, uh, I'd like to stay with staff's recommendation on this. Um, I think one of the things that we might find a middle path, uh, Susan, is to um ask um Casey to come back with maybe a little more explanation or a little broader idea of what these five days might be or how they might grow. Um, I do sort of like a bird in the hand, and um, I'm sort of, uh, you know, uh, this the, asking them to come back to sort of solve some of the Harbor Walk issues. Um, I like your suggestion of focusing more on what these events might be, uh, but I also want to try to encourage as many events as we can. So if I was to make a motion, I would probably uh ha- have staff, you know, look a little closer at what the five days might be, but encourage us to go forward with the twenty days.
Okay. Any other comments?
And Susan, I just want to make a comment before we do have a, a motion uh, that, you know, when we had the city manager in front of us, we were talking about possibly having metered parking in the near future, and I've always been an advocate of trying to avoid that if we can, that's why I want to. I think this would be a good example of how we can use off-site parking, you know, and shuttle people in, especially here. I don't want to give up on that, because I think this could be a good case study of how we can do that for twenty days a year and then possibly do it forty days a year for other things, when we know we're real busy. So that's, I want to make that connection, because I made it during the city manager's presentation. I says, well, let's look into this kind of idea about doing off-site, doing shuttling people in, that we wouldn't take all that valuable parking, and people that live in the city certainly shouldn't be parking there, right? I walk there. When I come to the city, I walk to the, you know, to that area, because I don't want to take up that valuable sub-stock, so I'm just saying that I want to get back to that, about, you know, using possibly off-site, not directly there, parking where we could, you know, somehow come up with a way to get people there without using that valuable parking.
We do have the trolley usually running during most of those summer months, and it might be just a, something where you would um publicize that more and suggest lots people could park in. I don't know that we have that many public parking lots available. Um, you know, sometimes, say, during the summers, the high school has been willing to use their lots, um, shuttle people over, but but that's.
But that speaks also to my comment about connecting market to the wider community, opportunity to potentially impact more businesses than just what's right down there.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments?
I'm ready to make a motion whenever you are, Susan.
All right, Mr. Ocean, make a motion.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to go with staff's recommendation, but with the adjustment to bring, not to do the extra five days by way of administrative approval, but to bring it back to commission. And when they bring it back to commission to amplify, based on Sean Green's letters, improvements to the, to the public way and the Harbor Walk, the very points that Sean has suggested, but also what staff, you know, can sort of see, what can we do to improve that? Have a discussion, engage the businesses there. And then I guess I would also add, I'm asking Casey and his crew to amplify what those five days, would they be any different? Is there an evolution here? What can they offer to sort of excite us even more about the events?
Do we have a second?
I would second that, Susan, Mike.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right. So, are we having Allison call the role here or is, do we need to actually do that, Scott?
I'll do it, I'll call the role. Commissioner King?
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocean?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Motion process 5.0, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Allison, and welcome again. Your first time out, you did good. Moving on or back to public hearings, we're now going to be looking at our zoning code update coastal implementation plan. And I think, hi Martha, we have Martha back with us. Martha Miller, for those of you who don't know, has worked with us off and on on this for quite some years now. It's good to see you.
Thank you, it's good to be back. Scott, did you want to open up?
Yes, sir. We're bringing back the zoning code for your review. We know that we have several new planning commissioners that weren't part of the sort of rigorous process that we went through previously. Just so you know, the Planning Commission, 2018 and prior to that, had kind of gone through the document page by page. And in your staff report, you know, there's links to that version, track change format. So, you can see what the, you know, what the issues were at the time when we put that on the shelf and picked up the general plan of the coastal program and carried that forward. We just couldn't do that at the same time from a capacity standpoint on staff's side. So, bringing that back now, the version of the document that you have in front of you incorporates all of those changes, they were accepted and then you have, you see new changes in it related to, you know, comments from our Embarcadero master leaseholder folks, some changes from staff, some comments from Coastal Commission, those types of things. And then Martha is going to kind of give you an overview of the overall process, she's going to touch a little bit more on the things that I just talked about. And then we're going to open it up just for that, you know, the Planning Commission can weigh in with questions and commentary. But one thing I would like you to take away from this is this is really an introduction for most of you. We're not expecting any motions or any actions out of the commission tonight other than to give some feedback. We do have some outstanding items that are mentioned in the staff report as well. We are expecting to get some additional input from the Chamber of Commerce, specifically the Government Affairs Committee or the GAC. They are looking at the current version that you're looking at now and we expect to get some recommendations for changes that we'll bring back to you either at the end of January or beginning of February, probably as part of an adoption hearing. Potentially, we're getting some additional commentary from our Embarcadero master leaseholder folks as well. I know we did get some input from, I think, Kathy Novak recently, that's not covered in the packet that you have. And then whatever, you know, things pop up during that review process that we need to, you know, provide a little more review on, we'll be doing that as well. And we're also working on the affordable accommodations policy. That's something we need to work with the Coastal Commission on. We do actually have a draft version of it right now. We didn't put it in the version that you see just because we haven't run it through Coastal Commission yet, but next time we come back, we'll have that for you too. With that, I will turn it over to Martha.
Okay, well, thank you and it is good to be back. It's been some time, but it's good to be back picking up this project. So, I'll start with a presentation to bring kind of everybody back up to speed on what the project is, what it contains, where it was when we last left it, and then changes that have been made and leave time for discussion. So, the project is a comprehensive update to your zoning code and your coastal implementation plan to give you a new code that, number one, is consistent with and implements your new general plan and coastal land use plan, promotes high-quality design, responds to community concerns about character, about project design. It's up to date, it reflects the current development context, current practices, current uses, provides clear decision-making protocols, streamlined review processes where appropriate, complies with state and federal law, and overall is clear, it's concise, and it's easy to use and understand. So, it has been where we are today is many years in the making, as well as a lot of effort by staff, the General Plan Advisory Committee that was involved in review of the draft regulations, the Planning Commission, and the public. So, the project did start back, I believe, in 2015 with research, reconnaissance, an assessment of your current code, your current regulations, where they're at and where, you know, how to kind of move forward with the update. As we started drafting regulations, we took your zoning code and kind of broke it down into smaller sections because it's fairly long and involved and it's, in order to facilitate the review, we broke it into about four kind of discrete chunks and took each of those through. We reviewed them with the General Plan Advisory Committee and we reviewed them with the Planning Commission and the public and really went through page by page of each one of those. So, we broke it down by administration and permits. We looked, had another chunk that was interpretation, district regulations, general site regulations. We looked at use regulations and citywide regulations. So, again, and those were developed concurrent with Plan Morrow Bay to make sure, again, that those were in line and that they were consistent with each other and that the zoning code and implementation plan really tracked with that and implemented it. So, we took those, the draft regulations through the review, again, like I said, spent a lot of time reviewing those really page by page. And then we made revisions to those and packaged that all into the public review draft zoning code from 2018. And that's what was posted on the website and publicly available. But we really, at that point, put a pin in it because that's when Plan Morrow Bay was going through coastal commission review and we knew that there were going to be some changes coming out of that that needed to be reflected in the zoning code before moving forward. So, we put a pin in that. Congratulations on certification of your coastal land use plan and that is a significant step. But with that, we then needed to make revisions to the zoning code to reflect what happened through that process and coastal staff input. So, then that's what we have in the document now and then the next steps will be going through hearings and adoption for the zoning code. Just an overview of what the zoning code and implementation plan is and what it includes. The zoning code really consists of five divisions and I'll go through an overview of each one of those. Portions of the zoning code make up the coastal implementation plan. So, to have a certified local coastal program, there's two main components of that. One is the land use plan, which again, congratulations on your newly adopted one. And then the second part is the implementation plan. And so, portions of the zoning code are make up your implementation plan. And again, we'll talk a little bit, break that down a little bit more in the presentation. So, the first part of the zoning code or Division One is the introductory provisions and this really just establishes the authority and the applicability of the zoning code and its relation to the general plan and the coastal land use plan. It also provides rules for interpretation and measurement of the code. It's really kind of reference materials at any time that something's referred to or there's a measurement that needs to be made, the rules for that are included in this first division. The second division really starts to get into the meat of it and this is the district regulations. So, the base and the overlay districts implement the general plan and the coastal land use plan, land use designations. And so, your general plan has the land use designation, general plan land use designations and then the zoning districts implement those land use designations. So, we have base districts, your agriculture district, your residential districts, commercial mixed use, public and semi-public, and your waterfront and harbor area districts. And then there's overlay districts which have standards that are unique to certain areas and those include your coastal resource protection overlay district, which is really coterminous with the coastal zone, cloisters, which has its, went through a unique approval process, has its own special standards, the mixed use residential overlay district consistent with that in your general plan, the waterfront master plan overlay district, which is really just a reference, letting people know that there is a waterfront master plan and it needs to be consistent with that, and then plan development overlay district. So, for each of the base districts, there's what the regulation set out is what the purpose of those districts are and the purpose statements really explain the purpose and the intent of each district and how it, which land use, general plan land use designation it relates to. And again, because the zoning is implementing that general plan, so it establishes that tie to it. And then it includes land use regulations and this is where the tables detail all of the land uses that are allowed in each individual district and then what permit level is required, whether it's just permitted or whether there's a use permit required or if something's not allowed. And then there's cross-references if there's standards specific to those uses that apply. And then there's the development standards, which are the dimensional requirements for things such as lot and density standards, height standards, setbacks, open space requirements, and any other supplemental standards that apply to development specifically in those districts. So, that's the organization of the district regulations. Division Three includes regulations which apply across all districts. So, these are things, as some people mentioned, the height standards and general site regulations or height standards for fences, landscaping, non-conforming uses, parking, signs, any standards that apply specifically to certain uses such as home occupations or the short-term vacation rentals. So, anything that applies to either many, that either multiple or all districts. So, these are the non-district specific provisions are included in Division Three. Division Four has, is administration and permits and this establishes the provisions for administration of the zoning code. So, who's responsible for making various decisions and then what the review, what the procedures are for those. So, that includes all your review provisions, anywhere from the ministerial kind of over-the-counter zoning clearance type of review, all the way through variances, conditional use permits, coastal development permits, amendments, and so on. And then the final division is Division Five, which has the terms and definitions. So, definitions of uses, which within the zoning code, we've updated your approach to uses, rather than trying to kind of list out every use imaginable that somebody may think of that we can never quite keep up with that long list, having use classifications that more group uses based on common function, product, physical characteristics. So, rather than calling out bookstore and stationary store and clothing store and all these different types of stores separately, we group those as general retail. And so, they're broader use groups. And then also terms and definitions, just terms, you know, specific terms related to zoning and that are used throughout the code are also included in Division Five. So, the revisions to the 2018 public review draft really incorporated a couple of things and as Scott said, in the document that you have before you, what we did was we accepted the changes in the 2018 public review draft and then the red line and strikeout included in the document that you have before you are any changes that were made to that. And the majority of the changes, just go over them in general, were really to, number one, reflect revisions to Plan Morrow Bay that occurred through coastal commission review. And again, these two documents need to be consistent and that don't implement that Plan Morrow Bay. So, we updated where necessary to reflect those revisions. The majority of the volume of the changes, so the majority of the red line and strikeout that you see really actually comes from feedback from coastal staff on almost the, I would categorize it as the organization of the implementation plan. So, what we had when we developed this and then the 2018 version is the implementation plan provisions were scattered more throughout the document. And coastal staff looked and they said, you know, there have been some recent IPs adopted and you should look at those for cues of having all of the coastal resource protection standards in one place, all of the coastal development permit provisions in one place and kind of take cues from some of the language and the organization we did in those, the recent, the other recently adopted implementation programs. So, we looked at those and we consolidated all of the implementation plan provisions that were throughout the document into three main groups. So, introductory provisions, which kind of, again, that applicability, the authority that it presents. And then we grouped all the coastal resource protection standards into one place and then all the coastal development permit procedures into one place. And then those portions of the zoning code that which compromise, that comprise the implementation plan are indicated with that IP following the chapter or section name. And the real, while that was some work to do and it needs to be looked at, I think it really does, will put the city in a much better position moving forward in that now, whenever you have any change to your zoning code, whether it relates to a coastal resource or not, it needs to go to the coastal commission because that's kind of the package that was presented and adopted as your certified local coastal program. This way, by consolidating those implementation provisions into places that really focus on coastal resource protection and implement, you know, consistency with the coastal act into these kind of discrete sections, then allows the city to maintain the other parts of your zoning code in a much more expeditious manner. So, if you have any questions, we can kind of go through that, but that's what a lot of the volume of the changes are. Other changes are for consistency with state law that has changed in the last couple of years while you've been going through the coastal commission process and that includes changes to accessory dwelling units and notably SB nine, which is some new legislations that will take effect in January, which really allows for two units and basically what's referred to as an urban lot split in single-family zones, that meets certain criteria. So, we included provisions for that. So we included provisions for that. And then there's miscellaneous refinements that have been made based on things that have come up as, again, staff's been kind of testing the code out and working to answer questions, you know, using the new code if that new code was in place. So various corrections and refinements were also made. So that's an overview of the contents of the zoning code, the implementation plan, and the revisions that were made. And Scott may have other things to add, otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Martha. Scott, do you have anything to add?
I don't think beyond, you know, the sort of introductory comments that I made, it really is to kind of get the feel for the, tonight's exercise is really to get the feel for the planning commission, where we're at with the document. This is, we're not expecting you to do anything really tonight, other than to ask questions and talk about the documents. We will be bringing additional things back. I think the one thing to take away from the presentation that Martha provided is really that the planning commission spent a lot of time with this document. You know, again, I'll repeat it, the planning commission previously went through this page by page, on two separate occasions, to kind of get us where we're at today. I know there's been, you know, we've gotten some public comment that comes in and says we'd like to have, and then we had public comment from Ms. Swentholz, said we'd like to have a side-by-side comparison, I'd probably like to speak to that for a minute. That's almost impossible to do, because our document, our existing zoning code is really old, and the current document that we have is an entirely different format. So there's no like, put it side by side and look at it. And this conversation was had with the previous planning commission, who agreed with the process that we went through. And we did go basically line by line almost through the document, to look at all of the changes, and we took a lot of direction from the planning commission and changes that were desired, including related to things like fences and shed locations and those types of things. I mean, the planning commission took a lot of time and effort and care going through those policies to come up with what you see in front of you today. Not to say that it's the end-all, be-all, certainly this commission may have different feelings on some of those items, but I just want to leave you with the thought that there was a lot of thought that went into the changes that you see in the document, and there was a lot of review that came in front of this, not just the planning commission, but also the general plan advisory committee didn't review just the general plan, they also reviewed the zoning code and sort of moved those things along to the planning commission. So it was a pretty rigorous review process, you know, iterative nature that kind of resulted in what you see before you today. And with that, I'll stop talking.
Before you stop talking, could you just give a brief sort of explanation of what your average user developer, somebody coming into town who may think they want to, you know, build a commercial property or a residential property, how, so they're clearly not going to take this stack of papers and read the whole code, how it will look to them, you know, I know that'll be an online format, but maybe just a brief overview of that?
That's a great question, Chair Stewart. So the plan after we're done with all of this is there, you know, several products out there that allow you to have this sort of living type document, living type documents. And so I think the way this, both our general plan, local coastal land use plan, and zoning code implementation plan will be consumed after we're done with it, will be electronically, because that'll be the way it's most useful and easy to access information. Because inside of these sort of living documents, you have a lot of cross referencing. In current documents, you do it in PDFs with hyperlinks and things like that, but that's sort of dumb technology. They have applications out here that actually allow you to tie it up, to tie them together, and you have the cross referencing tied together, so you're reading through the policy requirements for something in a residential zone, setbacks, those types of things, and you see, you know, another note there that says, oh, go look at this other policy. You're able to click on it and bring it up in a separate window, as opposed to going over to that page, you know. So it's easier to look at, and if you want to look at it more, then you can click on it, open it up on the full page, and see the full context of that text. And you can do it between documents. So you can do it between zoning and the general plan, land use plan, local coastal land use plan. So the idea is to have this sort of, have this living document that's a lot more user-friendly than, say, just a plain PDF that's on the site, or one that's got a few hyperlinks in it to kind of get you where you need to go. This will actually be something that you can readily jump back and forth and not get lost, or have multiple pages open, you know, because if you do those types of things, you can end up with several pages open inside of a document when you use the hyperlink type of version. So there's a couple of different products that we plan on, you know, using once we're done to sort of connect this and make it much more user-friendly for folks. And also searchable, you can go right to the, like, you know, zoning standard for certain commercial standards or whatever, and it kind of allows you to look at the document in that, in that manner.
Great, thank you for that explanation. All right, Joe?
You know, Scott, I have a question. This document is so long and dense and, you know, I think that undoubtedly there are going to be some unintended consequences buried somewhere in the text that we've, some amount of whatever right now. So my impression is, we've heard some discussion about how tall fences should be, and what setbacks should be for accessory storage things. Those kinds of things in the code could be changed without also having to take it to the coastal commission? Is that correct, or am I?
So some things can be and some things can't. It just sort of depends on whether it's part of the implementation plan or not. So that's the things that's identified with the IP and italicized around it. So those sections require coastal commission certification for changes. Anything else in the document where we make changes doesn't require that. And so we just reside with the city. And so it'd be a faster process, meaning there's the planning commission recommendation to city council, two hearings at council, and you're done, versus that process, and then you send it off to coastal and like wait for certification.
Well, take for instance what came up today in terms of the setback for an accessory storage structure. And if we decided to change that in terms of lowering the height or reducing the square footage of the structure, would that have to go to the coastal commission? Or is it too difficult a question to ask, sort of, out of hand like that?
I can win. So if this were to be adopted and certified in place as it is drafted, you would, the city would be able to amend those things without having to go to the coastal commission, because those provisions are not in the coastal resource, you know, in the IP sections. And that's really one of the difficulties right now with the way that your zoning code, your IP is set up, is that anything, whether it really is a coastal resource protection issue or not, goes to the coastal commission. So this was what I was kind of referring to as that more kind of expeditious way of being able to maintain your code.
And I have one other subject here that's of particular interest to me, and that has to do with affordable housing and the in-lu fees. If we ever thought it was noteworthy enough to extend the responsibility of in-lu fees to maybe beyond multi-residential, is that something that also, in your opinion, would have to go to the coastal commission?
No, it's not a coastal commission, I'm sorry, it's not a coastal commission issue, and in fact, we are looking at doing just that. It's part of our housing element implementation. We were contracted with our design group to help us develop policies that do some of the things that you're just talking about. And some of those things potentially would live in zoning and potentially, but not, they would be part of the IP.
I see Commissioner Roche has had his hand up, and then Commissioner King.
There's a number of things I'd like to sort of emphasize, but first, I think what I'd like to do is follow up on what Joe had to say. One of the things, and this is a question for both Scott and Martha, is how do you handle revisions? You know, we approve this, we implement it, and then we find out that's a bad fence height, or we find out, you know, whatever it might be. And I would love to see a method put in place now that accommodates those revisions. And the revisions are complicated, not just with the coastal commission, but even making revisions through city council is a laborious process. Maybe we could have a special session with Martha and Scott where we got in-depth with some of these things. One idea on the revisions is, once a year, we have kind of a collective discussion about things that might be valuable to consider changing. And so we would then go to council with a number of considerations, rather than one at a time or per issue. I'm not really asking for a discussion of that tonight, but I guess I'm asking Scott and Martha, is it worth considering how revisions are done, and can we make that part of the document?
You can have, you can have, you know, directive language in the document that talks about how we update it, but we're a small city, and I think, so what I can tell you is, when we're done with all of this, almost immediately, we will find things we want to change. I mean, it's just the nature of a comprehensive update, we will come, we'll trip across something that just doesn't mesh with, internally with some other policy, I guarantee it. And things like that, we might want to be very nimble with, right? I mean, we might want to immediately go forward and change it, because it isn't part of our IP, and so we don't really have a limitation on the number of changes we can make, because the IP, you can only make three changes to the local coastal program a year. We can make unlimited changes too. Not that I wouldn't want to do that, I don't want to spend all, you know, my entire year's long worth of updating or revising, but still, we can be more nimble that way. That's just really more for thought. I think it's, we could put something in there, we could come up with a policy that's outside of it, or the planning commission, we do this meeting once a year and go over, I want to change it. It could be either way, it's kind of up to the commission.
I'd just like to put it on the table, because I think it's a very real thing, and I've seen it be a real difficult thing for some cities, many cities, yeah.
Asia?
Yeah, thanks. I'm just wondering if maybe you guys can explain, is it, in my understanding, it is not always typical for the coastal program implementation plan to be integrated? Is that correct, integrated with either the general plan or the zoning code?
So, so you're, I'm not exactly sure I'm following you, so you're saying it's not always common to have your implementation plan contained within your zoning code?
It's not typical. How it was before, how it was before these kind of adjustments?
So that is fairly common in older, in older LCPs and implementation plans. Example, before I came to the city of Morro Bay, I was in the city of Isma Beach for many years, their implementation plan is also their zoning code, like ours is currently. That's out there. There's also a number of cities that have, and it's usually in cities that have just small portions of the coastal zone in them, but they'll just have a standalone IP. You know, it's by itself, it's not part of zoning, it's just this thing by itself. And that's usually because there's not a lot of landmass that's regulated by it, there's not a bunch of uses there. You know, Morro Bay, 99% of the cities in the coastal zone, city of Isma Beach, you know, 65% of it's in the coastal zone. So when you run into those situations, you're going to see them more often than not, I think, incorporated into, you know, the zoning process in some way, shape, or form. But Martha's been doing this for a long time, she might have a different take on that, so I'll let her weigh in too.
Scott's absolutely right, and actually what we found is, so when everybody first did their implementation plans, it was the same as the zoning. And for areas that had a coastal area and an inland area, they started out the same. Well, the inland areas got updated, because they didn't need to go to coastal commission. The coastal areas kind of didn't get updated so much. And so those two, the inland and the coastal areas, which really started out the same as zoning ordinances, really kind of went completely different paths, because of the additional, you know, processing, having to go through the coastal commission certification.
Yeah, I ask just because I'm, obviously, it seems far more efficient, better use of government money and time to not have to put everything through the planning commission if it doesn't apply. I'm wondering what we're losing that was, you know, when I think of plan integration, when you have two different types of programs or regulatory bodies, and they're integrating their plans, you often are setting a higher standard for your community, and that brings a lot of benefit and a lot of protections. And so I'm wondering what, even though this is obviously administratively and practically so much more beneficial, what is being missed, or what are we taking away? And I'm not sure if that can be answered.
I don't think we're taking away anything. I think, you know, it really depends on who's using the document and for what purpose, right? I think you want to have all of your, you know, sort of, all of the standards that relate to development, all the requirements that relate to development and environmental protection and those things, in one document, so people can find it. Our biggest issue, you know, right now with our current zoning code is there's no cross referencing in it. So there's like, you think, oh, I need the setback requirements, and then you, if you don't go look at another section, you don't find out that there's some other policy that's applicable to the property that you're looking at that requires you to do something different than the base development standards, like setbacks, for example. You know, a lot of gotchas that way, and those are the things we're trying to remove. So having an integrated document's much nicer, because people can go and look at it, and all of the things that would apply to their property are there, for the most part. And if we do this sort of, you know, living document that I talked about before, for lack of a better term, then you have the full cross referencing that goes into your land use plan as well. So they'd be able to find theoretically all of the things that apply to the property, and wouldn't have things that you're missing out on, whereas, that's not the case now. I mean, there are policies, previous to the adoption of the general plan and local coastal land use plan, there were no cross referencing to any of the documents, there was mirrored language in the general plan and LCP portion of it, because they were separate, but in one document, this is very hard to use. And really, if you weren't a land use professional, good luck getting through it without, if you didn't talk to us. I mean, it was kind of terrible, honestly.
And I'd like to add some historical context for that, too. So our current zoning code was adopted in 1995, and, you know, to Scott's point, what he's talking about, when we updated, when we adopted the 95 zoning code, that wasn't even a comprehensive update at that time. It was just a series of minor amendments that they put together. So when we talk about the achievement to update to a 2021 zoning code, we're really, in effect, updating a zoning code from the 1980s. And just the historical context at that time, it was so difficult to get it passed in the 1990s that the city at that time said, we know, like, let's just get it adopted, and let's get done. It was taking so many years at that time, and they just, they knew that they would just come back and update it later. But the difficulty in having your zoning code be equivalent to your IP made it difficult with the limitation on LCP amendments. So just that I'd add that for context.
Great, thank you, Cindy. Mike, you've had your hand up for a few minutes here.
Well, I'll just chime in, because again, we're not, we don't have to do anything other than chime in tonight. And in a way, I'm glad we're here now, but I just want to read something that's in there under 1701-070, and it says, "The zoning code shall be administered by the Morro Bay City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Community Development Department." That's exactly what we're doing now. I do appreciate all of the great work that went into this by the former planning commission. My goal is to continue that great work, you know what I mean, get the job done. They set us up, so let's get it done. So my attitude is, when I was going through this document, I saw some things, and I'm going to just kind of throw them out there, and then I'm going to ask Scott and Martha a question. So if I had my way, and I could spend time and energy on this thing, because I realize once I say yes, it's going to be, we're going to want to change it right away. So I agree with Scott, we're going to want to change it the next day, because you can't get this all right, you just can't do it. So, but I'm going to throw out the things that I really wanted to do, which is Division Two, 17.07, which is residential districts. Come on, what's not going on with residential in the state of California right now, right? So we've got to get that. 1708, commercial and mixed use districts. Again, I think those are just, we're headed there, we should be there already, but I don't think we're quite. but I don't think we're quite where we need to be. 17.11, which is waterfront and harbor area districts. Again, very complicated, but it applies. You know, we're very on top of what we're trying to do with our harbor lock and, and those districts. 17.14, coastal resource protection and overlay districts. So we're going to be, you know, again, we're doing that as we speak. So those are, that's from Division 2. Division 3, the thing that stuck out the most for me, and Joe said it already, was affordable housing, density bonuses, and other incentives. Come on, the state's clamoring, pushing people to do stuff, right, in this area. So again, we need to do some follow-through with that. And under Division 4, I just picked up one because I believe it's going to be happening soon if we're not already there, and that's development agreements. I think that we're going to start doing things that we haven't done before. So under 4, if I could have my druthers, if I could only pick the six things I picked out of this whole document, by the way, I just picked those six things, I just, you know, had my ear because this is all happening right now as we speak. Now I'll ask Scott and Martha the question, would these have to go through an IP process? Most of what I just mentioned? Or could Morro Bay do this mostly on its own?
Well, I mean, everything related to coastal resources, so the waterfront area, coastal resource protection, would be areas that would require...
Sure.
I mean, if we adopt them as is, and you wanted to make changes later, then those would require amendments to the city's implementation plan. Meaning, ask them to coastal. The other areas you mentioned would not.
Yeah, and that's what I picked up, Scott. When I went through this whole report, I saw some stuff that we could do as a city, we could get this stuff done. There are going to be things we have to go back to coastal for IP. I mean, that's just a given. So all I'm saying is, there was a lot of stuff we could do here, right, without having to go, if we adopted it as is, without having to go back and make changes. But under our, under our authority, we're going to be reviewing this anyway, every year, as Bill suggested and others, to make those changes anyway. So we're going to be stepping up to the plate, given our authority anyway, as a planning commission, to make those recommendations to council, to become even better at what we're trying to do in Morro Bay. So I'm just saying, I took that 5,000-foot level view, went through the whole thing and said, we could probably do most of this, but we are going to have to work on it on an annual basis, more than once, hopefully, to get those other things we want done. Is that about right?
I mean, I think we are, you know, Commissioner Rodriguez, we are, you know, working on some things that will require, I mean, we'll send this off, you know, we'll go through planning commission, get recommendations to city council, city council will adopt, most of the document will become effective.
Sure.
Minus the IP portion that we sent off to coastal commission. Hopefully, we've done the same good job that we did with the land use plan, and they certify it within a couple of months. Because that's how it happened last time.
That's right.
Hopefully, we can get that same, you know, quick service on it. And that would be, that would be fantastic if that was, you know, if we were able to make that happen. But like you said, we do, a majority of this document, once we approve it through the city, will become effective. So that's pretty...
And I'm just, just ending off here, I'm just glad you and Martha are still here because you guys went through the first. You know, you guys worked with that previous time, planning commission, you know, set this, set this up, and you're still here to help finalize it.
Believe it or not.
What I'm saying, no, no, I mean, so in other words, I want to appreciate all the time and energy, I don't want to change a lot. All I'm saying, it's been pretty well set up for success, and we just, we're the, now the planning commission that will move it to the goal line.
You're putting the polish on the document.
That's right, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I, and I thought it was pretty well done before we even put the polish on it, Scott. And that's, that's a compliment to Scott and Martha's great work. Thank you.
Beyond putting the polish, we're also looking at those two new elements, right? Or the state, new state laws, those are brand new, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, and, you know, one thing that, sort of, to tag on with Mike and certainly with Asia as well, one of the things that stood out to me was rereading that chapter 1724 on affordable housing, density bonuses and other incentives. And how can we, you know, strengthen that, use that, make sure that, because I, I think SB 9 has, you know, the interest of providing housing. I think the ADUs basically by right have an interest of providing housing. I don't think they necessarily do. So I think we could perhaps use this chapter to help us beef up our incentives for local people who are doing this kind of development, to actually provide it for long-term rental housing. And, and, and so we start meeting those housing needs and goals that we have in this community. That's one of the, the top priorities of our city council, I believe, in their goal-setting. And, and really, for this commission too, I think we're all looking at that need, the business community wants it. I ended up in La Sosa because affordable housing is not here. So, you know, maybe, and, and again, not to make any particular suggestions right now, but, you know, maybe we could all take a closer look at that chapter, see how we can apply it, use it. I mean, one thought I had is even combining parking regulations where, for example, an ADU does not have to have parking on-site, however, a vacation rental does. That's in the code for, so, so it's kind of a way, you know, if we're going to increase housing, say, in mixed-use areas, to keep those from becoming vacation rentals, do we do something that ties it in with parking? You know, so, well, you can't have a, a vacation rental here because you don't have a designated parking space. I don't know. Something to look at, and again, maybe look at those incentives. Helping people want to provide this kind of housing and do these kinds of projects here would be something, whether we can slide that into the document or maybe it's there already.
I mean, so a couple of things on that, you know, on that topic, Chair Stewart, we are, again, working with RRM to do some of these things, providing the incentives. They're also going to provide us a, you know, some materials for our website related to ADUs and encouraging those. We're working, like I mentioned previously, we are working with four jurisdictions in the county to develop stock ADU plans that will be giving out for free. All of those things encourage the affordable housing component associated with ADUs and encourage those to come forward, so.
Yeah, it's good work. Bill?
So let me join Michael and say, you know, thank you, Scott, thank you, Martha, thank you, you know, to the previous planning commission. This is a good document, I really do think it is. I think one way we might go about this, Susan and maybe the other commissioners, we could consider this. I have a lot of questions, just to understand rather than change. I'm wondering if we would want to consider a special session where we do our homework and we ask Scott to do some homework. I'm very interested in seeing some sort of summary of major changes. Not unlike what Betty suggested in her letter, but if Scott could hit what he thinks are the most substantial changes, reference specific sections of the old, you know, the, the existing zoning code compared to the proposed. If we could get that before the, let's call it the special session. I think all of us on the commission have kind of areas we'd like to focus. I join everybody with affordable housing in Division 3. I'm also interested in landscape, parking and signage. And I'd like to sort of understand those specifically. Under Division 4, I'm very interested in design review, sort of understanding how that works and understanding what's in there. Do we want to change anything? Maybe not, but again, to be nimble about that. Revisions for me are a big thing. Oftentimes, even in city council, these have to go in front of a public hearing and all of that. So I guess I'd love to sort of understand how we can make those nimble changes with, like, that's just my take. Maybe the homework could be each commissioner submits their top five concerns, we do a special session where we really do ask these questions, where we have the time to kind of hear from Martha and Scott in some detail. That for me would be enough to move me to, you know, to, to vote and make this happen. I don't think we're, I don't feel we're trying to redo it. I think, for me, I want to understand it and maybe, as Scott suggested, polish a few things.
So Bill, could I suggest in Exhibit A, can't really see it, there you go, get the light on it. We had that sort of flowchart set up where there were particular sections, isolated, you know, who came forward with that question? I think we did this before, actually.
Well, I, I think, Susan, I'm more interested in like the changes that have been, are ready to be adopted. Like, what are those? What, and, and I'm thinking it's like 10 or 12, like, what are the...
So this is changes beyond questions?
Yes.
Because I think it might be good for commissioners to present their questions as well, just quick things, get answers, you know, where is this, what is that, why was this removed, all of that.
I think maybe both, yeah.
I just wonder, and Scott and Martha can answer this, but I feel like the, the changes, that might take another novel. I mean, it's, it has been a sea change, literally.
It has. I, I think, you know, in, in combination with if you guys decided to go down the road as suggested by Commissioner Roche about maybe giving us your top five things you want to talk about and like asking us specific questions ahead of time, not at a meeting, then we could respond to that. And we could also give you, I think like Commissioner Roche said, like the top 10 or 12 things we think are the biggest changes in the document. I mean, we did a lot of things, like, single-family residential lots, you're not required to have a garage anymore. That's a big change. So, so we could do a few of those.
And Scott, thank you for that. Because one reason is, once this commission votes for this, I think we need to defend it. So I think we need to understand what's in it. And for me, it's more about that than trying to be considerate or rebuild it.
And, and, Bill, let me just, Martha, real quick, and that's what I was trying to reflect when I read that section. It's our job. We signed up for this, the planning commission, okay? And so I totally agree with Bill, once we approve it, let's do our job, but let's do it well at the beginning. And then when we do make those changes, you know, it'll be easier if we understand what we're doing at the beginning. So I totally agree with Bill, thank you.
So I just want to offer, so this, this question of what's changing and where are things going and what's happening has been an ongoing discussion. And what we did when we drafted the regulations for review, and if I can share my screen here, at the beginning of each section, we put in a red box, kind of capturing what the changes to the existing provisions are, or if something was a brand-new section. Because of the way that your code is organized right now, it's so complex, so confusing, sometimes you can't even tell what the existing standards are because everybody who reads it will have a different interpretation. And that was one of the things we heard from the beginning. So what we did was, and, and all of those modules are on the Plan Morro Bay website. So you could go to any section and say, oh, use regulations, you know, I wonder, you know, what the, if somebody could describe to me what the changes are. You can go in there and look if you wonder, oh, what, what were the changes to, you know, regulations for drive-through facilities or anything like that? Those are described, again, in those modules. So that reference material is available on the website. And then certainly, if you had certain, you know, kind of your main topics that you were, you know, particularly interested in, we can answer those questions as well. But generally, the description of changes is available.
I think a lot of changes also reflected the requirement to look at more environmental and climate change issues. I, I think that even got into landscaping issues, Bill, which was important, but certainly a lot of the coastal protection issues, those kinds of things. And then new technologies, you know, you have the charging stations required in there, that's a thing back in the eighties.
What, Commissioner, what do we think? Would we do a special session, Susan, just on this?
I would defer that to Scott and looking at, you know, are you thinking we would have a meeting outside of our regularly scheduled time?
Yes, so that we can do it in a timely way, yeah.
So it's, it's kind of up to the commission. You know, we, my, my idea, you know, at, at least the way I have it kind of framed out, is the next meeting we would come back to you at would be, you know, one of the adoption hearings. I mean, I'm not saying you're going to adopt it one, so we could do this work at one of those. I mean, I don't have any issue with it. I, I thought it was going to take two meetings to get us through adoption or recommendation to city council. If it takes a third, fine. So I'm, I'm comfortable doing it in that manner. And I, if you want to have something separate, that's fine, but I think we can do it in that, in that same, under that same process that we sort of envisioned as part of the adoption hearing. We're bringing other things back to you for you to look at, which is why I also think that, you know, it'll probably take two hearings to get through that.
I think that can work, Scott, as long as we don't have other agenda items. I think the problem is, is once you add a couple of other agenda items, it, it becomes a very long evening to do this.
I, I'm, I'm comfortable, you know, making it a very light agenda, meaning a small item, thought of it before it or whatever. I don't, we don't like to tee you up for a, you know, three-hour meeting, you know, or four-hour meeting, that's not, that's not really productive once you get past about the first couple hours. So I agree with that, and we've sort of experienced that, you know, throughout the process of Plan Morro Bay, so I'm...
And are you willing to do those, your homework around sort of a summary of the big, the big heavy things and, you know, ask the commissioners, are we ready to give our top five questions, our top five topics, in preparation for that next meeting?
Sure, and that would be one in January, most likely, so?
So some of this is predicated on, you know, us getting through coastal commission with the affordable accommodations, us getting comments back from the GAC, Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber, and then anything else that we were going to get from EML, you know, in that timeframe. If it's not, it probably, it might be the first one in February. So one of those two meetings is depending on how long it takes us to get through those pieces of the document.
Could you, just so that I'm getting this right, when coastal talks about affordable accommodations, they're talking about visitor accommodations, not resident accommodations being...
Correct, that is their entire focus as it relates to that and what that looks like and how we deal with that for new hotels and, you know, vacation rooms, all those types of things.
Okay.
So.
Boy, they off-base. Oh, I didn't say that in public on TV. Joe?
Yeah, I thought, you know, I, I'm hearing that one or more of the commissioners would like to have a more in-depth understanding of some of the changes in the new code before they render a vote. And in that situation, I don't think there's anything we can do except, you know, try to achieve a greater understanding. So I'd be in favor of an additional meeting. The next thing I'd like to, to say is, in the, in the issue of sustainability, I think that the document could use some design guidelines, design sustainability. But I'm, I'm thinking I'm correct in that assembling design guidelines is fairly time-consuming. And I think that that's something that could be added to a modified zoning code without too much difficulty. And the third thing is that, again, with respect to affordable housing, I'd like all the commissioners to, to think about, again, as I said earlier in the meeting, and, and ruminate about this when you're formulating your questions, is to, again, why the obligation for in lieu of affordable housing fees is placed exclusively on those developers of multiple housing units, so I think of five or more, of which there are her, they, they show with great infrequency in Morro Bay. When you think of the, of the, of the reality that affordable housing has become an increasingly important issue up and down California in the last several years, and that people purchasing and remodeling their homes by affecting the demand and ultimately the price for those houses are also affecting what is affordable housing. what is affordable housing. And eve, and, and, uh, people who seek to expand their businesses and inevitably, um, increase the number of employees, the demand for affordable housing for employees are also affecting affordable housing. So I'm, I'm really at a loss to understand why the burden, again, of these in lieu fees is placed exclusively on multi-residential developers and why does not more broadly spread over the whole, um, real estate economy, particularly because private homeowners, um, you know, have seen such tremendous appreciation in the value of their own homes. Perhaps should be better spreading the burden of achieving affordable housing. That's the end of my speech.
I, I would, um, go back to the, the commentary that I provided earlier is that we have a separate item that our R and M design group is working on just on that specific issue, Commissioner Graffia and the rest of the commissioners. Um, so I don't know if it's something, it's certainly worthwhile thinking about, but you will have an entirely separate opportunity, um, to review and weigh in on, uh, developed policy as it relates to that specific issue, even related to like commercial development and whether we want to apply in lieu fees to those types of development as well. So that is coming forward. Um, we are, you know, actively working on that. Um, so that'll be coming forward separate from this. Again, it's not that you can't talk about it as it relates to the zoning code right now, but it is contracted with another, um, outside company for, to help us with, you know, develop those types of policies exactly as you, um, you know, commented, uh, Commissioner Graffia.
Isn't it also the case, though, that if they were providing low-income housing, they would not have to pay the in lieu fees? So if part of their project was to provide some of that housing, then they're providing that instead of in lieu fees. For them, it's cheaper to do the in lieu, so.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm, it was predicated on the notion that so often it's the in lieu fees that are offered rather than it, but I, I have no objection to that either. But, but in, in the case of-
Oh, I think they're minimal, too. They're pretty small.
Yeah, but, but, but in, but in the situation of somebody who's building or significantly remodeling a single resident home.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah.
We could, we could attach some in lieu fees to that. I, I know it's a kind of a revolutionary approach, but it bears thinking about.
Mr. Roshan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm gonna join Joe in that question because I think quite often on small housing projects requiring affordable housing discourages housing period. And that becomes a compromise in a, in a city of our, our size. The in lieu fees become a discouragement to building. So I do think that's one of the refinements we might have to make as we, you know, sometimes policies, no matter how well-intended, uh, don't have the effect that we want. And then the ability to adjust that is pretty important. So I think Joe, it's a really good point.
Yep, and Mike?
Yeah, and I like the fact that Scott already said this at the beginning, the fact that he's still getting more information from more people. So, you know, I'm waiting for that, you know? So I want to see what everybody says, how they chime in. This is, affordable housing happens to be, being worked on. Is that right, Scott? I mean, somebody's working on this, like you just said. And, uh, so some of the questions we may have may be answered in the time that we have our next cut at it. So I might not necessarily submit questions at this point because I think it's, for the most part, a great document, but there are areas where I am interested in. So I'll just continue to monitor. Scott, I don't know how that information gets back to us, you know, how we'll get the additional information since we will be the approving, you know, commission. So how do we get that information once you get it? That's just a question I have for Scott. I kind of set him up a little.
Uh, the idea, I mean, we're, we're gonna probably, probably try to get information out to you early, uh, before the meetings, um, you know, like we did, the, we posted the zoning code update with all the changes in it early, so you had the opportunity to look at that. Um, you know, we might be able to get similar documents out. Um, at least the beginning, the beginnings of what the staff report might look like in the form of our responses to the comments that come in from the planning commission, and we could post that, so there's no Brown Act issues. Um, it's really just your questions and, and comments and concerns and our responses to those. Um, and maybe, you know, in some way, shape or form, it's not dissimilar, at least in the initial analysis to the, um, comment summaries that we had, uh, you know, that are in the current document. Uh, and maybe the staff report has the more comprehensive review of that, you know, the, you know, the specific sections or what have you. It just kind of depends on, um, the comments that we get. I, I'm assuming it'll look like it till I see them, so.
Yeah, and, and, and I was mainly focusing on Scott on the other entities or the other bodies you're working with to get input on this document. You know, that, that would, that's what I'm talking about. In other words, I want to see how they work out the affordable housing element. So, you know, and that way I can pose my questions. So I agree with Bill and Joe. I just want to see where we get with these other entities or bodies that you're working with to give us that input. That's what I meant. I didn't mean to, does that make sense? In other words, give it a set. That way we won't, we won't have to ask you a question that's already been answered and may, you know, meet our needs.
Absolutely.
Before we have to, perfect, that's exactly what I was talking about. Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
Bill, did you have a comment or did you just leave your hand up?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm always happy to hear from you. Um, Asia, did you have anything else to add?
I'm not, not specifically, except that my, I don't have the option to raise my hand.
Uh oh. You need to be a little, um, icon on the bottom of your screen when-
I know, usually it's there, but it's not there. That's okay, I just-
Well, I try and make eye contact and you can always just do that and I will respond to that, too.
But no, it is like-
Took me a while to respond to that other little hand up there, and so, yeah. Okay, so I think we sort of have our marching orders here. Um, if you have questions or concerns, comments, we will send those to staff. Staff will come back with, um, kind of a, a general overview of the five to 10 most significant changes. Does that sound about right, Bill, that relate to our, our code?
Yeah, I think that would be a great, a great first step. And, uh, enough time so we can ask, um, some more penetrate questions, that would help me. Not so much things that I'm concerned about, but just I want to understand.
Well, there were a few things I know as I went through it, I just was curious. Well, I wonder why that's there. So it would be, and they would be quick answer things, I think.
I think so, yes.
So, um, I, I would appreciate being able to do that, but not wasting a whole lot of time and-
And I'm up for, if we can fit it into a regular meeting, all the better. Uh, I just want to make sure we've got enough time to feel comfortable to keep asking questions till we, you know, we kind of get to where we're, we're confident.
There will be no rush.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing I want everybody to take away, we're not rushing.
Exactly.
This is new for, you know, three of you and you need to be comfortable with where we end up and we'll take the amount of time it takes for that to happen.
That's great.
I promise.
Right.
I do, uh, I do have a couple of, um, I will send out the links to the modules that Martha talked about because that has all kind of the directed changes that we had in the document. So we'll send those out to you guys, um, you know, probably tomorrow, uh, so you have them and you can take a look. It kind of shows that the iteration of the document and, and what happened. So that's, that's kind of the big picture, but then we'll give you that, like was requested, that maybe top 10, 12, whatever it is.
That really sounds great, Scott. And that, Martha, that'll be helpful, thanks.
Yeah. And, uh, and Chair Stewart, we also, do you need to open it up for public comments? Um, uh, and, uh, I would reserve, uh, maybe before or after we do that, I'd like to see if Cindy or Martha had any questions for clarification for the, for the commission based on comments to this point.
All right, why don't we see if there's any public comments first?
Okay.
And Anthony, do we have anybody with a raised hand in the queue?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I see Betty Winholtz with her hand raised. Okay, Betty.
She's so patient. All right, Betty, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, this is Betty Winholtz. I, I appreciate the fact that you'll be getting some modules and you'll be getting some information and asking about the, you know, uh, major changes. Um, I don't see how you're noticing the public. You know, this really affects us and you're our representatives, but we would like to know what's going on. So I don't know if those modules are available to us. I don't know if you'll be putting anything in the newspaper or highlighting something online where people can go read about it. But this is the level for me of where the tire meets the road in terms of the general plan and, you know, how this affects my street, my property, my tree in my yard. Um, this is the guts of it and I need to know what's being changed and whether I think that's a good thing or not. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments, Betty. And I, Scott, I don't see any problem in providing those links on the website. There's an awful lot-
They're on the website already. We sent the links to you so you had them. They're only the Plan Morro Bay, uh, version of the website. It's, yeah, so they're, all the history of kind of Plan Morro Bay is on there. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information there.
And then, of course, um, if and when you come up with your 10 to 12, however many sort of major changes, that would be part of our agenda and, and our staff report. So I'm assuming you could read that at that point.
Yeah, these are all, yeah, and these are all noticed public hearings. Um, we also have the listserv folks that people sign up to get notifications, not only for planning commission package, but things related to Plan Morro Bay, general plan, zoning, that type of thing. So those are all, you know, the, the methods that we use to get ahold of, you know, folks and let them know what's going on. And we do hot topics on the city's website as well, uh, to let you know when these things are coming. We did one for this meeting to let people know, hey, zoning's back, um, that type of thing, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, any other public comment, Anthony?
Uh, thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Great, we will close public comment and back to staff. Did you have any questions of us? Martha's happy, Cindy's happy, Scott's confused, no.
I, I would just, I would just add for the record, so if anyone wants to look at those modules right this very moment, uh, the website is www.morrobayca.gov backslash, or is it forward? Backslash Plan MB. Um, at the very top of the page, um, is the Coastal Land use plan. Um, and then right below that is the zoning code update information. So you'll see the 2021 draft and then below that is the 2018 draft. It's presented in two, uh, two different ways. One, where we combine all of the modules into one document, so you could just click on one link. Or right below that are the various different modules that, um, that Martha described. So, yeah, we did, when we got, getting ready for this planning commission meeting, we did clean up the Plan Morro Bay website just to kind of make sure that things were readable, uh, that we were organizing it as in what's, um, salient and what's happening right now, which is zoning. So that's all right there.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, Mike, did you have a last comment?
Yeah, yeah, and she, uh, Cindy just teed it up. I mean, I know Scott, I know Cindy, and, you know, I think this is the first time I've worked with Martha, but obviously she's in the game. You know, she's been working with us for a long time on getting our zoning right. But, uh, obviously this is something that's going on statewide. I mean, this is just, right, we're not the only city that's trying to work things out. But I just wanted Martha to kind of just chime in a little bit on where we're at and what we've done and compares to where other people are at, what they're doing. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to be involved with the American Planning Association because that helps everybody when you can share and you can, you know, learn from others. So I just wanted to ask Martha just to give us a little bit more information about herself. I don't think we've ever worked, at least I haven't worked with her. So I just wanted to know a little bit more about Martha and, and her thoughts on where we're at in this process, if that's okay, Martha.
Sure, I would say you are not alone. A number of jurisdictions throughout the state are working on this very, um, thing and facing kind of all the same things. The housing element updates, the housing, uh, addressing affordable housing, the state legislation, um, updating your implementation plan. I do this work, uh, throughout the state with multiple jurisdictions. And so, uh, I do bring that experience and the, um, approaches and knowledge and things that gain from that to offer to Morro Bay for, you know, your consideration and to see what, what works best for you. So it's been a long-term relationship that we've really had now. Um, but I, my role in this is to provide all the resources and best practice examples for, to best work for your community and help you meet your objectives. So, um, that's how Scott and Cindy utilize my expertise and I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Well, thank you, Martha. I just want to say thank you because I knew that already that you were committed to our community. So I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to move on from this item? Next up, unfinished business, and we don't have anything listed there, but Scott, I wondered either at that point or at your director comments, if you could just, um, briefly address, and I know we talked about it before, that new policy of the city of, um, not posting public comment that's received in less than 48 hours before the meeting or whatever, uh, you know.
Seventy-two.
Very awkward.
It's seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two.
Recent court case that was published. Um, I, uh, I'll be honest, I had this conversation with Cindy earlier today. You know, I got about two pages through the published case and I haven't gone back to it since. Uh, it was a bit convoluted in the beginning of it and I was like, I need to be able to sit down, get a quiet spot and read through it. I haven't had the opportunity to do that. Um, but the, the direction from the city attorney's office, um, uh, I'll try to remind you, Chris Newmeyer, being the city attorney, is that, um, yeah, we don't publish, uh, correspondence, um, within 72 hours of the, of the public meeting. And it has to do with Brown Act violations in a specific court case. We're going to have a policy eventually. He's working in, internally with their firm because they serve a lot of different, um, public agencies and working with our city clerk's office to come up with what that looks like. Um, I know you heard, uh, from public comment that we posted it and then took it back down. And then Chris said, well, if you posted it up, then you should just leave it there. But Chris Newmeyer, being the city attorney, so we put it back up. So you'll see it in the agenda thing there, you know? It was, it was a mistake, you know, we're, you know, a little bit creatures of habit sometimes when the stuff comes in, we try to get it posted quickly. And, um, I think we did it more quickly than we should have and, you know, didn't really, you know, recall the city attorney's direction, so that's what happened. Certainly apologize for the confusion, uh, to the public. This is not normally how things happen, for sure. But, um, it is how we're going to proceed in the near term until we come up with that policy. Um, I don't have a timeline on it. If I did, I would tell you about when that's going to happen. Um, so hopefully by the time our next meeting rolls around, I'll have some more information on that. Certainly, as I do, I will share it with the commission. And, you know, if we come up with a, you know, a policy prior to that, prior to our next meeting, I will probably also share that with the commission so that you understand, you know, what's happening moving forward. And I would imagine we'll post on the website and all kinds of stuff as it relates to that because it was a significant change and I think it's, you know, made a lot of folks concerned, but.
I think we could let the community know that we, as commissioners and certainly the council members and all the other board members get copies of your, um, communications if you email it to us. So if you email to, you know, the planning commissioners, we're all going to get it. I would be happy, um, if you can't do public comment and you want to say, could you address this? You know, I, I think we'd all be willing to, to help people get the word out if they can't participate, you know, during that, that open public comment time at the meeting. It's, it's interesting, um, but it doesn't mean your voices aren't heard. Um, it just means that it's not going to be reposted as, with, with the agenda items before we actually get to our meeting. So.
If I could chime in, Susan, the, uh, you rarely win arguments with the city attorneys, but, um, I would say 72 is a really long time to not be able to get that information. Something like 24 seems at least more reasonable to me. So I don't know if that would-
Especially since our agendas tend to come out on Thursday. So by the time the general public has a chance to read it, then you hit the weekend. So, you know, if you're talking 72 hours before Tuesday, that's a, that's a hard push.
Yeah, yeah.
To get that out there. So, yeah, not a great situation.
It is not, it is not a great situation. I, I 100% agree with that, as do all staff. We don't like it. Um, you know, but we're trying to be, you know, I would say we're probably taking a bit of a conservative approach, but that's what city attorneys tend to do, um, when it comes to things like this. Uh, which is why I said hopefully we're, you know, acting and resolving, you know, quickly, um, to come up with something better than that. Up to that point, we are, um, internally, at least with staff, on the, on the planning, uh, division side of things. If we get correspondence that comes in just to us, but is related to an item that's in front of the planning commission that you would normally see as part of, um, uh, public correspondence, we're sending back to those folks, please send it to the planning commission. Here's the planning commission email. Um, so we're doing that, uh, so it does get- So at least doing that, uh, so it does get out there again. Public can't see it, but we are at least doing that so the Planning Commission can see it, so you can make comments or bring things up at the meeting as you just previously indicated, um, Chair Stewart.
Thank you, Scott, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Planning Commissioner comments and future agenda items. Anybody have anything they want to? No, no, okay. And Scott, any other comments from you?
A couple of things. Um, you've all, you know, been very interested in recent housing legislation. The City Council has, has an item on the next, uh, meeting, so on their, uh, December 14th meeting, um, where we'll have Dave Mullenax, um, from Lead California Cities. He's going to provide a presentation on SB eight, SB nine, SB 10. Um, so it'll definitely worthwhile. If you can't attend the meeting, you can certainly see the YouTube video later, um, attached to the staff report that I am putting together for that meeting. Um, there is also a legislative update memo that covers those same bills from the city attorney's office, uh, kind of a summary memo of those. So that'll be made available, so that's definitely something you might want to take a look at. Uh, and then I'll be providing at the end of that presentation, it'll be Dave Mullenax giving his presentation, um, and then it'll move to me and I'll be talking about all of the other, and the status of the other housing initiatives that we're working on right now, um, including your zoning code update that we just talked about. So, um, we'll be touching on all those types of things. Probably a decent staff report to take a look at, um, you know, uh, just to kind of, you know, get a feel for that and also see that, that sort of, um, legislative update memo from the city attorney's office, um, forward. So I have that and, uh, what was the other thing I wanted to bring up? Uh, waterfront memo, um, that we need to bring back. I am working to bring that back to the next meeting. Um, so, and at that next meeting, we're also going to have a presentation on the stock ADU plans. We're partnered with, uh, Alamo Grande, Atascadero and Grover Beach. Um, we received, uh, refunding $181,000 to develop, uh, half the ADU plans, our stock ADU plans. And that presentation will be to the Commission at the next meeting. So that'll be something interesting for you to take a look at, I think.
Great, exciting.
Looking forward to that.
All right, well, with that, I think we have come to the end of our meeting. Good job, everybody. We will adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 21st at 6:00. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Thanks, everybody. Christmas sweater.
Christmas sweaters.
Oh, yeah, wear, wear a really ugly Christmas sweater.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, have a good one. Bye.